Good evening, Hatfield. Welcome to the April 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. This is a special meeting that is a hearing regarding a member of the Housing Authority. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order, and as usual, I'm going to open the meeting by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board and just a further notice that this meeting tonight will be recorded. So because this is an open session, do we read this executive session?
No, it's not necessary because they're not going into executive sessions.
Okay. So we, again, as I stated, the, this meeting is specifically a hearing to discuss the conduct of a member of the Housing Authority, specifically Mr. Christopher Smith, who is joining us here tonight. I want to say a couple of things before we get started. First of all, this hearing will be conducted differently than our regular Select Board meetings at the direction of our Town Council. First and foremost, this process will be fair to all parties. The Select Board will call witnesses who will take an oath before they begin speaking. Witnesses may present exhibits to the Select Board. The Select Board will ask them questions, but we do not need to allow for cross-examination. At the conclusion of our witnesses, Mr. Smith will be given the opportunity to defend himself, introduce exhibits, and offer his own witnesses who will also take an oath. Once all witnesses have had an opportunity to speak, I will close the public hearing and the board, the Select Board will then deliberate an open session. So do either of you have any questions or anything before we get started or comments?
No, I understand how this is going to work.
Okay. So before we call our first witness, I just want to state publicly that the Select Board has a responsibility to ensure that members of town boards, committees, and in this case, authorities, conduct themselves professionally and respectfully at meetings and in the commission of their duties. All members of boards, committees, and authorities should expect meetings to be efficient and productive, and additionally, townspeople have a right to expect that they will be treated fairly and professionally by boards, committees, and authorities. So as our first witness, we would actually like to call Cara Lieber to present the letter once again to the Select Board, but you do have to, we do have to do the oath. So anybody who's speaking should probably come up to the microphone. And so I would ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me to swear or affirm that the testimony that you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
So if you could just, you know, this hearing is as a result of a letter presented to us by the Hatfield Housing Authority, which we thought it would be appropriate to present again at the beginning of this.
Yes, and did you just want me to read the letter from the chairperson? Yes. To the Hatfield Select Board, dear members of the Hatfield Select Board, I hope this letter finds you well. As the Executive Director of the Hatfield Housing Authority and the Chairperson of the Board of Commissioners, we are writing to formally request your intervention regarding the conduct of one of our board members, Mr. Christopher Smith. After careful deliberation, the Hatfield Board of Commissioners has voted to send this letter to you requesting that the Select Board take appropriate action in addressing his failure to fulfill his duties as a Commissioner. It is with regret that I bring to your attention the following concerns. One, failure to carry out the duties as a Commissioner. Mr. Smith has not been fulfilling his responsibilities as a board member. He has failed to attend many board meetings without providing prior notice or valid explanations for his absence. Despite multiple attempts to contact him, there has been no response to the correspondence, which has hindered the functionality of the board and effective operation of the Housing Authority. Two, breach of fiduciary duty. As a board member, Mr. Smith has a fiduciary duty to act in the best interest of the Housing Authority and its residents. His failure to engage in the board activities and his lack of communication indicate a disregard for this responsibility, compromising the integrity of the decision-making process. Three, violation of bylaws and policies. Mr. Smith's actions also appear to be in violation of the Housing Authority's bylaws and policies, specifically those related to active participation in meetings, responsiveness, and engagement in the proper execution of his role. Four, qualification lapse. According to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC, all Commissioners are required to complete mandatory state training. Mr. Smith has failed to meet this requirement within the time allotted, further questioning his ability to effectively serve on the board. Given the above points, we respectfully request that the Hatfield Select Board take appropriate action, which may include censure, disciplinary measures, or removal from the board in accordance with the applicable procedures outlined in state and local regulations. The Hatfield Housing Authority and its residents deserve a fully functioning board, and Mr. Smith's actions have compromised our ability to operate effectively. We trust that the Select Board will consider this matter with the attention it requires and appreciate your prompt attention to this issue. Should you require any additional information or documentation regarding this situation, please do not hesitate to contact us. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Cara Lieber and Alex Malinowski, Chairperson of the Board.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd recommend introducing this as Exhibit A.
Okay.
Entering as Director.
Yes, we'll enter that as Exhibit B.
We also provided the TrackStar. TrackStar is the system that the state uses to track the training. The training is initially due upon 90 days of appointment and then due every two years. The system automatically emails the person when it's due and then sends them a reminder email. And so he was emailed, the initial invitation date was November 2nd of 2023, gave him a deadline of September 16th of 2024, and it was not completed as of this printout was, which was the day I presented this to you all.
Which was within the last four or five days or week or so.
Yeah.
It's still not completed.
It's still not completed, correct.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to go.
You could enter that as Exhibit B.
Yeah, that, we will enter that as Exhibit B. We'll get to you later. We're going to, I outlined the proceedings. I. We're going to get to you later. I outlined how the proceedings are going to go. Chris, you're going to have, we're going to give you time, in fairness, we will. But we're going to get through this, and then we'll get to you. Okay. Thank you.
I may suggest also one further question to the Select Board. I'd like to ask it about if there were any issues that arose because of this conduct when it comes to state review or anything else.
Yes, as we recently had our PMR, the state comes in and conducts the performance management review, and board members are required to do the training, and the only finding that we had corrective action in was that our board had not completed the certification, and Mr. Smith was the only board member that had not completed the certification. So it was listed as a corrective action on the performance management review by the state.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, is that it?
I think so, unless, do you have any questions or?
I do not.
Anything for Cara?
Thank you.
Thank you. So as our second witness, we'd like to call Alex Malinowski, who is joining us by telephone. Alex, can you still hear us?
Yep.
Alex is Chair of the Hatfield Housing Authority. Alex, as I did with Cara, we're going to have to ask you to take an oath, so we're going to assume you're raising your right hand.
Yep.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
So, I mean, from, from my question for you, Alex, as the Chair, is if you wanted to take an opportunity to, you know, describe the, the working atmosphere with Mr. Smith, how the struggles when he wasn't appearing to meetings and then the struggles that there were when, when he was at meetings, I'm sort of giving you an opportunity to describe how this has affected the Hatfield Housing Authority.
Um, I'm, with the, during the time that Mr. Smith was on the board, I noticed personally if, you know, something, there was a disagreement, there was definitely tension on the board between all the board members. To me, it seemed like there was a couple of our projects that didn't seem to go his way, and he got upset about it, and we went in different ways that, that shouldn't have went, and as fulfilling his duty as a board member, not showing up when, you know, he didn't want to, I guess you could say, or whatever his obligations were, I don't know. I can't say that he didn't want to show up. I can't say he didn't have things going on, because we're all human and we all have things going on in our life. The part that bothered me was that, you know, I'm on the road six, seven days a week, and obviously, as you guys can tell, I'm currently on the phone because I'm stuck out in New York. You know, I did everything I could to be on the board, or, you know, be there in order to have a quorum, and if I wasn't going to make it, I, I told the Executive Director whether I am or whether it was Cara now. You know, the least he could have done was say, hey, you know, I got some things going on, or, you know, I'm not going to be at the meeting tonight, I have something I'm doing. Fine, but there was no communication, there was no nothing, there was no anything to anyone, and to me, it was the lack of fulfilling his job as a board member. And I'm not going to, you know, trash talk him, because we all, like I said, we all have stuff going on in our lives, and I don't know what was going on, but that was the part that was, to me, difficult to deal with, because meetings, and we wouldn't have a quorum, so we'd have to call off the meeting, and, you know, you couldn't sign the warrants, you couldn't sign the bills, you couldn't sign nothing, because we didn't have the quorum. And luckily, Diana stepped in, and we were able to fill the quorum when Mr. Smith wasn't showing up. And his attitude was just kind of piss poor about it, and, you know, I, and I'll bring it back to myself again, you know, I'd be getting out of work, and I'd be up at midnight the night before, and I'd still show up to the meeting and have a smile on my face and do what needed to be done, and then go home. But it was just the, you know, the arguing, the, and the argument wasn't all the time, it was just on stuff that we disagreed on, and I will say, Mr. Smith and I have had our, had our differences, but it was just, it's difficult to work with someone like that on the board.
Okay, thank you. And I noticed, and we've got a lot of documentation here going back years, there were other times, so not just the recent absences, but there were other times previously, going back, I think as far as '21, and that those absences were creating a problem. So it isn't just the, the recent ones.
Yeah, and I mean, I'll, I'll admit it first, I mean, I've definitely missed meetings before, but it's, you know, for me, it's work-related, I, you know, I, I try to prep for a living. It's not an easy job to fulfill, it's, if it was easy, everyone would do it, but the long hours and the long nights, it's, it's tough to do certain stuff, and when I can be there, it's great. And when I'm not, I usually try to see if I can fall in or, you know, at least be present somehow, so I can, you know, fulfill the quorum for the board in order to get, you know, the important stuff that needs to be signed, or if there's something that needs to be voted on for a project, at least we'll have a full, you know, full quorum for it.
Great. Did you have any questions?
No, I'm just trying to understand the timeline. From October, when Mr. Smith missed the meetings, how many members were on the board at that time? Because originally, there was five, and then a couple left, so did the absence, was it only three that were on the board at that time? Or?
He stopped going when I got appointed, so I was attending, so there were three members there.
So, I mean.
But there were, but the, if, I don't know if you looked at the documents, but there were absence problems going back years.
In order to have a quorum on a five-member board, you need at least.
Three.
Three votes. So.
Yeah, and at some points, it was just Judy and I.
Maybe before I got back, maybe before I got on, yep.
Yes, before Diana got on, excuse me, sorry.
Okay. Greg, anything?
But these absentee, absences, they, they went on before that, though? Or is it just since it's been noticeable when there is only three members on the Commission?
Well, in the documentation we got, there's references to absences going back into 2021, and he, it's, this is in an email where it appears he would boycott meetings based on disagreements, so.
It may make sense to reference that, that email with another.
We'll, we'll get to that, yeah, we'll get to that.
Well, back to 2021, then, anybody else have absences on the board? I mean, people get sick and, you know, I mean, sometimes they can't make all the meetings, so, I mean, I, I'm just trying to be fair here, if, if one person didn't make meetings, that everybody else missed meetings, so, I mean, I'm just trying to understand that, that, though.
Yeah, I mean, I think, in fairness, Alex is pointing out that no, you know, nobody goes to all meetings, and, but they, these were usually not excused or explained. Anyone else have anything else for Alex?
No.
Anything else you want to add, Alex?
I'm all set. That was pretty much what I just had to say.
Okay, great, thank you. You're welcome to stay on, I hope you do. So the next person, I, we were hoping to be joined by Jenna. Has anyone reached, Brenna, excuse me, has anyone reached out? Is she running late?
I just emailed her again and have not heard anything yet.
Okay.
Have you heard anything?
So I, there is another current member of the Housing Authority here tonight, Judy. Did you want to speak to this issue at all?
Just that.
Well, if you, if you want to do that, you're going to have to come up, we're going to have to.
And you got to be sworn in.
If you could just introduce yourself.
Judy Shelly.
Judy is a member of the Hatfield Housing Authority and a resident at Capewalk. So you have, I'm going to have to ask you to raise your right hand, swear or affirm that the testimony that you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Hey, Andrew, I got a quick question.
Yes?
Hey, am I all set to go? I just got to my.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we just wanted to make sure he was good. So I'm, you know, I would ask you, I guess, the same question basically I asked Alex about, you know, the atmosphere at the meetings and your ability to conduct the business of the Hatfield Housing Authority.
Basically, I have the same answers, it's that, you know, when we had a, a three-person quorum, and one person doesn't show up, makes things difficult to get anything done. Prior to that, if there was a disagreement on a vote, it would be very contentious. I, you know, have knowledge that certain things were sent to ethics and all different kinds of backdoor stuff that would affect, you know, other members if they disagreed. You know, that's just not the type of behavior that's required of any board member. We all have to be able to agree to disagree to something, you know, and, it's just, it was, it was very contentious. Our meetings would last two hours, now they're down to 20 minutes, and it's just all business, we get it done and move on.
Anything, Greg?
No, thank you.
Okay. We are also joined tonight by two former members, fairly recently former members of the Housing Authority, I'm sorry, Cara.
I just need to state something for the record, is that okay?
Sure, you're still under oath, so come on up.
I just want to state for the record, I'm, I'm actually here, I'm on leave now, so I just wanted to make it clear and on the record that I'm here is Cara Lieber, I'm not here representing the Housing Authority. So I thought it was important that I state that for the record.
Yes, thank you, understood. So we do have some former members of the Hatfield Housing Authority that, I'm assuming you're here because you'd like to speak tonight. Mr. Wilks, we'll have you come up first. You could just introduce yourself, and then I'll administer the oath.
John Wilks, I'm from 277 West Street in North Hatfield, and I am the former member of the Housing Authority. I spent 12 years on the Housing Authority. I was asked by the Board of Selectmen to take a temporary position so they'd have a quorum back 12, well, 12, more than 12 years ago now.
Okay, before we go any further, though, I'm going to have to administer an oath. So if you would just raise your right hand and swear or affirm the testimony that you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay.
I just want to, you know, like I said, it's a temporary job. I always said, just go over there for a year. The Board of Selectmen asked me to come in at the time, it was Ed Lesko, Jeff Foyle, and I don't remember who the third one was, asked me to serve out a vacancy, they were having trouble getting quorums, so I went on there, I says, I'd do it, and one of my former friends, Stanley Semansky was on the board too, so he said, just stay on for a little time, and it ended up being 12 years, but I just wanted to say, our first six or seven years in the Authority was hum, and we, we got things done, our, our meetings were well-run, even though we did have some contentions with the former director and the chairman, chairman myself, we had, we didn't see eye to eye on every issue, but we did get along. And that all changed shortly after Mr. Smith won an election, a write-in election for 11, with 11 votes, back in his, five years ago. He beat the former Chairman of the Housing Authority, who thought he was going to be re-elected, he never got his paperwork sent, so he, he lost. So Mr. Smith decided to take the job. From there, you know, I contacted Mr. Smith right away and, you know, asked him, you know, for anything he needed, we talked a little bit, and he says, see you at the next meeting. So, next meeting comes, we had done some preparatory work, we had a new Executive Director, was only there for about a year, Brenna Duquette, and we've asked her, you know, she worked 16 hours a week, and one of the first requests from Mr. Smith, after saying he, he doesn't know where the record, or wanted to know where records were, and, you know, he asked for 42 years of records, so he could review. Now, the board doesn't have, I didn't, I had never seen 42 years of records there of the Housing Authority, but that was his first step. He asked for 42 years of records, minutes of the meetings, corporate organizational charts, stuff that happened in 1973. Here it is in 2020. He wanted everybody to keel over and give him all the information, he was on a mission. He wanted to root out inefficiencies and different things that's going to happen at the Authority. He said there was corruption here, different things going on, he says, well, hey, whatever you want to do. So he, he was tough to work with, very tough to work with. I tried to, he, as soon as he was appointed, and because we lost our board member Stanley Semansky passed away, and we had some vacancies on the board, and to say one thing, people don't go to, you know, all the meetings, you know. I had trouble getting quorums for years, you know, for different quorums, people that show up for me, and people had different things in their lives they were doing, and we had problems with all, I missed one meeting in 12 years, all right? And I tell you, you know, and that was because, mostly because of a surgery I had to have, but one of the things I wanted to, wanted to do was want, tried to keep harmony, and they elected me Chairman, so it was, I didn't want to be there, really, I'll tell you, I didn't want to be there, I thought my career, I had retired from the state, and I was trying to wind down from the town, but I just couldn't. Some of the projects that we had come up with, we had developed a parking lot project, that was the first thing, that was a challenge to us. We had been in the planning stages for three years on a parking lot project, and Mr. Smith came in, and one of the first things he, he did, he felt that this parking lot should go behind the facility, out in the open lot on our, you know, we had land behind the facility. He said, we have to do, we should disregard, you know, our planning, three years, and we had already secured the grant for developing a new parking lot, and it was a substantial amount of money to do it, and the parking lot hadn't been done in 42 years, so we, we wanted to do it. Mr. Smith became a roadblock, and how he became a roadblock, he didn't show up at one meeting, after we had lost Stanley Buskisman ski, we didn't, we, there was only three of us on the board, Alex, myself, and Chris. Chris wouldn't show, didn't show up for three meetings in a row, and one of the things we had to do, we had to sign the contract with the contractor, and we had to sign it with this, you know, state, and one of the things Mr. Smith insisted that we throw the whole thing out and start over from scratch. Well, you know, couldn't do that. So one of the things I did, and he, he'd been going around town telling everybody, the best place to put it is in behind, behind the, the facility. What happened was, he kept saying, this is the place we're going to put it, they should go there, it's more efficient, we can, we can have parking out back, and we'll have more room for the tenants out front, we'll have more parking and parking space, we only have 26 spaces, or there's 44 units, we didn't have enough parking, you know, granted, we knew that right along. So one of the things he did, he, you know, he was telling his friends, and one of the things I didn't like about Mr. Smith, you know, one of the, one of the, what would you say, responsibilities of a Housing Authority member is not to get involved in day-to-day activities. He would go down and go to the, he's already said it in a minute, he would go to lunch down with tenants down there and start talking to a couple tenants, you know, and saying, they're going to complain to him about things that weren't happening at the Authority, you know, we have an Executive Director, and the Executive Director, by formal regulations, has to run the day-to-day operation, not the board, and we, we have a responsibility to hire the Executive Director. So we, we hired this young woman, Brenna Duquette, so it was her first, she was, she was a, worked at East Hampton Housing, and she was an administrative assistant over there, and she was working both jobs, part-time in East Hampton, part-time, and she was tremendous. She was tremendous. She helped us bring up all the records up to date, and I, you know, I have to give Smith, Mr. Smith credit, he did help us on some of the things, management plans and some of redoing our bylaws, but also Brenna and I worked together before Mr. Smith got in it to put in a tenant handbook for all the tenants. We put the tenant handbook together, we got it out there, and it was one of the documents that still exists today. But one of the things we, we were short, and some of our management responsibilities were to update the management plan, and we didn't have it up to date, you know, and it takes a lot of time to do it. I had worked with a prior, prior Director of Housing, Donna Peddic, we had brought it up as much as we could, and it was mostly handwritten stuff that we wanted to do, but we never could get around to it at a meeting to, to discuss it at length, so, but that was one thing. But the parking lot thing, get back to the parking lot project, that Mr. Smith had, had in his eyes, he can't go there, can't go there, you know, everything's wrong, so I had written a letter to the abutters, we didn't have a meeting, but as a chairman, and I'm with the Executive Director, I thought the abutters, the property, shouldn't notify that a particular plan was being proposed in, in the town by a member that would put the parking lot behind the facility. Well, lo and behold, we, what, just to speed up things, we, we waited till Mr. Smith wouldn't come to a meeting till another member of the, was elected to the board. So I felt the letter was appropriate, and to this day, I So I felt the letter was appropriate, and to this day I still feel it. We sent letters out to all the abutters of the property notifying that possibly the parking lot would go behind the town hall, which would affect the people in their homes. And after, after that, what happened is we did get a new member. Mike Hogan was elected to a vacant seat, Buster's vacant seat. And he became a valuable member. He was a very, very good member on, you know, one of our best, best guys I've ever worked with on any board in this town. And he came on board. This first meeting, we had the responsibility, we were under the gun to sign a contract with the contractor and with the state to go ahead with the parking lot project. A three-year program that we worked on to get for three years. Mr. Smith voted against it. He didn't want it. He wasn't going to, going to have anything to do it. Lo and behold, what happened after that, I found out, you know, four months later, Mr. Smith contacted the Attorney General saying I have, I had violated open meeting laws in regard, and also because of that, the letter I sent out to the abutters, saying that it was illegal to do that. Well, I did get a response of our carbon copy of Mr. Smith's response for the Attorney General. And it said on, and I'll present it to you guys now, that I did not do anything wrong in regard to contact the abutters. So that was my first big.
Can we take a copy of that for an exhibit, please?
We do have Brenna Duquette on the phone.
Okay. Hi Brenna.
But that was, the parking lot project was passed at the first meeting that Mike Hogan addressed. Or here was there, was able, we had a quorum. Mr. Smith came to the meeting, you know, saying, you know, four, we had four people on the, on board. We'd vote for it. And yeah, on, we'd take the motion up and do it. It passed three to one. Mr. Smith didn't, didn't want it, so. And that was his response by, first sour grapes I've seen with him, you know. That was my first exposure to him on that. And, you know, when you get a letter like that, how to, you know, he had said something, oh, I'm going to go to the Ethics Commission. I'm going to go to, you know, you know, you guys can't do this. I'm, you know, you know, I've seen a lot of that over 38 years with the state. And this, this guy was probably one of the worst I've ever dealt with in my whole career, both in municipal and town government or state government. And he, and as Judy had said, and Alex has said, the meetings that we had when he did show up, were all tense. They were all tense, and he seemed to be questioning every little, you know, T and I and everything in regard to. And also with our executive director, and our executive director, she called me numerous times, saying, I can't stand the guy. He's, he wants all kinds of information, thousands of pages of information that, and he kept saying, as a board member, I'm entitled to all this stuff. I'm entitled to all this stuff. Well, 43 records, years of Tom meeting or, or meeting records, other records, meeting record, meeting records. It's just, you know, it was unbelievable, unbelievable.
We, we do have Bren up here, so she will be able to speak to some of those issues herself.
But we had, you know, and the feeling, and she had complained too, that she felt threatened by him. She was threatened by him.
Yeah. We'll, we'll let Brenna speak to her.
But she did complain to me that she was threatened by him in, in regard to the point. And I went to see our Chief of Police to talk about it. And I'm sure if you asked Mike about it, he might have a record for you. And the time I went over and talked to him about what we could do about his behavior. And I didn't know what to do, you know. Every meeting we had, Mr. Smith was always, always on the other side, with one exception in the whole thing. And it was the mini-split. Mini-split, for two years, we were talking about mini-splits and putting them in the Authority. And he, you know, and, you know, Mr. Smith is pretty, pretty knowledgeable on that type of stuff. And he was, you know, he helped us, you know, in regard to talking about the intricacies of the project. And he is also was kind of an expert in solar, which I don't really, you know, know much about, but he helped us with that. So, you know, it wasn't a complete failure on his part. He did provide information, but sometimes the way he provided it, you know, condescending to the other members. He would questioning other members that they had a comment, he says, and to this point, he said, that's a stupid. He's numerous times, he said, that's a stupid thing. And he'd say to either member, other members of that. So I tried to keep the decorum on the meetings. It was tough. And, but he is a member, he was a member, and I tried to, you know, let him speak. And it was tough. It was tough for me to do that. But in regard to the mini-splits, I had, I voted with Mr. Smith on it. It went down to vote three to two. And he, he could not believe that it was, the other members voted against it. He says, you're putting the safe, safety and the health and security of the, of the tenants at risk and it's, and calling the other members voted stupid, it's just unbelievable. And the reason I, I voted for it, I thought in the long run, it might be in the best interest of the Housing Authority. But at that meeting, 38 of the 42 members of the tenants at the, at the Housing Authority didn't want the mini-splits. Even though I voted for it after, if it came back up again for reconsideration like Mr. Smith wanted, I would have voted against it the second time. So that was the real contentious, the two big ones I remember. But there was other ones. There was other ones. I'm sure Brenna and, you know, if Mike talks, he can tell you about.
No, okay.
Some of the things that she had, she had, you know, experienced with Mr. Smith.
Okay. I just, I guess I would just point out a couple of things in these. There's actually a letter here, or an email, excuse me, from Mr. Smith to Brenna in 2021. And he actually asked for minutes from 1966 to 2020, so even beyond the 1973 that you had mentioned.
So I missed seven years.
And then, you know, there's also, we, you know, we do have documentation in here that there are specific limitations on board members, and the number one item is to not sort of get into carrying on the day-to-day operations of the, of the Housing Authority. So I just, there's documentation here to back those things up.
And I, at this point, I did watch that, the last meeting you had with Mr. Smith. And some of the comments he made, that the board, he was the only one on the board that was thinking about the health and safety of the tenants. That was the biggest slap of the face to every person I've ever worked with on that board. You know, we, we had health problems down there. We solved through the executive director, Mr. Mendick, and then through Brenna, other things. We had C-DIP. We had a contagious disease there. We, we caught and we stopped, you know, with the effort of the Board of Health and the executive director. There was other issues. When I heard this sewer thing, I, you know, I don't know when it happened, five, five apartments with sewer. I would like to know the five tenants who, they didn't come to, as far as I knew, ever come to the executive directors to complain about sewage backup. You know, he, he's getting that information at the lunchroom. If they have a complaint about sewage backup, you go to the executive director. Our maintenance was.
There are no records of that.
Yeah. Our, our maintenance problem, or not problems, program was cited as some, one of the best around, you know. And we have a part-time maintenance guy, and we also had contract, local contractors, you know. He wanted to know, we got to go out to bid every, every 15 seconds on, and did we bid this? Did we bid that in regard to any of the, you know, work we did? We had a rule, if it's under $1,000, you know, you can go out, the executive director can get three quotes and pick who, who they want, you know. But, oh, it was a challenge all the time, believe me, with him. So, but in, in regard, you know, we pulled in over three, since I was there, and I'm not bragging for myself, because I don't care about the town. I've been on the other drawing or trying to get other grants for the town for a long time. We had over $3 million worth of grants that we got in the 12 years I was there. And because we applied for it, and we were working with a part-time executive director. And when the part-time executive gets overwhelmed with all kinds of questions and things that Mr. Smith wanted and challenges everybody, everybody's crooked. You heard that from, everybody's crooked, you know. Everybody was, you know, going on stealing. We have a 200, 300,000 dollar budget at the Housing Authority. And 87% of it was from the tenants' rent. We didn't get a big subsidy. We became a subsidy authority probably in my third year on, on the board. And it was like a $2,000 subsidy we were getting. The state doesn't subsidize us. We have to go out for their grants. We have to apply with everybody else for their grants, so. And to do so, and with the other board members, they don't want to do it. You're going to deal with a guy like, that's always going to question every little detail in, in regard to any little project that goes on. We were able to put a roof on, sightings on, windows, new parking lot, new sidewalks, a maintenance building, and just finished a rehab of the outside, did some lawn work. That was the last project I was involved with before I retired last year. But again, you know, to, to, for this guy, for me, you know, you're, you're trying to let him go. It didn't come soon enough for me during my tenure. And he's also a member of other boards, right? He's also a member of the Redevelopment Authority, right? How successful has that been? I think that should be abolished. That's all I have to say.
Did you want to add, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. No, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, I read through, there's a lot of, so I just, you know, there's a lot of documentation here going back years. As you can see, a lot of it was of great interest to me, so there's quite a lot of alarming things.
Just one more thing. The last week I was there, the last comment out of Mr. Smith. Brenna had gotten a job where she got, where she was going to get three times as much as she was getting here in North Carolina. She called me up and said, I have to leave. I'm moving out of state. She said, she loved it here. She loved the tenants. She loved working with most of the board members. She enjoyed, she said, I enjoyed working with you. And, and she left. The day, you know, the day she was, her last meeting, I handed in my resignation. I had planned to leave two years earlier, but because of Mr. Smith being there, I couldn't leave the other board members out to the wolves, like I said. And it's just, it was just terrible. It's just terrible. But he did, he did say that to me, he says, you and Brenna conspired to leave on the same day. And that, that was the biggest insult I have ever heard, so. But that's it.
Thank you, Jay. Do we still have Brenna?
Brenna, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Hi Brenna. We are also joined on the phone tonight from, I think, South Carolina, North Carolina. Brenna Duquette, who was the former director of the Housing Authority. And I think it's important that we hear from Brenna as well. Brenna, you missed the beginning of the meeting, but we are going to have to administer an oath before we can allow you to speak. So are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so you will have to raise your right hand and swear or affirm that the testimony that you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Can you hear us?
If so, say I do.
I'm sorry. You all are picking up a bit? I do.
Did you hear the oath?
Yes, I did hear that.
Okay, so do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, basically been asking about the atmosphere there and the, you know, ability of the Housing Authority to function with Mr. Smith on the board. And then tell us about your experience a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for having me. And to hear a bit of what Mr. Wilks was saying, I also listened to the last meeting. So rather than re, repeat, we do know that he impeded a lot of the daily operations. And my, I guess what I ultimately really want to hone in on and talk about is the countless times he acted on behalf of the board without consent or directive from either the board as a whole or Chairman Wilks at the time, former Chairman Wilks. Whether that be personally contacting vendors, engineers, you know, the, the side, side projects, for lack of a better word, really hindered the board working as a collective body. And to your point earlier, him being overly involved in daily operations. I had informed him on numerous occasions, you know, within the bylaws of the Housing Authority, within the state guidelines, there are, there are procedures to follow. If a tenant has a complaint or concern, they're to come to administrative staff. If it is not dealt with or handled to the tenant's satisfaction, then they can be asked to be put on the board's agenda and address the board. So for him to go out of his way and discuss, you know, the plumbing or whatever other issues he felt necessary to discuss outside of a board meeting and without my knowledge, again, not proper procedure, to sit down every week at lunch and just let tenants give them, give him their gripes. That is not how a housing authority functions. There needs to be, you know, kind of the chain of command, or it completely undermines the administrative staff. So again, rather than go into, you know, the stoplight not working, the mini-split, that didn't happen. I did just want to speak to how his behavior was not, he was never acting on the best interests of the board as a collective body. It was always his best interest. If he did not like something, he would go out of his way to, as I said, do personal research, con, contact engineers, vendors, things of that nature, and then bring that back to the board. But when he was speaking to these individuals, he was acting as if the board had given him directive to do so, which is false. And that in itself is unethical. I don't know if there is anything specific that you all would like me to, you know, speak on or elaborate on.
I mean, if you have, you know, a couple of instances, if you want to, you know, give us more information on that, then.
Yeah, yeah. So specifically with this mini-split project that the board voted down, he then came to the following meeting and had contacted the engineers, the HVAC company that was involved. He, he contacted them and had discussions with them, again, acting as if it was on behalf of the board, when the board had already voted no. So he was not within his right to go ahead and speak for the Housing Authority on something that was already voted on, turn down, matter over. So that's, that's one specific instance. There, I mean, I'm sure I have the emails printed out of several different times where he contacted members of EO HLC and, you know, asked them specific things where Carolina Gonzalez, then it went back to him and said, you know, this really should be going through the director. And, and again, just not recognizing that there is protocol to how things are dealt with and how discussions happen, and you can't just, you know. What's the, what's the word? You can't just undermine me or the board because you don't like what the answer was.
Okay. Thank you, Brenna. I know that there were, you know, there were some things in here about feeling intimidated or trying to find the specific things. I guess I was just curious if you wanted to speak to that as well.
I think I, in general, Mr. Smith's overall demeanor was that he, he was always right. And again, if he did not receive the response that he felt was appropriate, there were tactics used, whether that be trying to inundate me with requests for information, you know, badmouthing either myself or other board members to the tenants, just creating an air of hostility in general. I don't know from day one that we ever had a professional relationship. I think he made it very clear from day one that he was gonna, you know, come in, kick the door down, as you alluded to before, you know, getting meeting minutes from the '60s. I apologize, I'm trying to think of something more specific for you as far as like intimidation. But I think it was just more of knowing if he didn't like what I had to say, there was always going to be repercussions, whether that be him filing something with the Ethics Commission that was unfounded, or, you know, just like I said, general inundation of requests, going to my superiors in Boston. And just, yeah, so there is definitely an intimidation factor in it. I always knew what he was trying to do, and that is why from day one of meeting him, I kept a file on him, because I knew that this would come to a head, because a man like Mr. Smith will, will not stop. He will keep going and going until someone stops him. And again, he has never acted, although he says in the best interest of the tenants, he has never acted in the best interest of the tenants. It has always been in his best interest.
Madam Chair.
Excuse me.
This is not court of law. I have not. My attorney isn't here. I wish to adjourn this meeting until we can have, and then I think it should go to a court of law. There's so much hearsay, so much improper information.
Mr. Smith, we're going to get through our witnesses, and then you are going to have time to speak. You had two weeks notice of this meeting with the ability to bring your attorney.
Mike, my lawyer's in another part of the state right now.
And you asked for this meeting to be held in open session. That was your request. So I'm going to stop you right there, and we will get to you. This will be fair, you will have your time.
Okay. Do I get to cross?
No.
No.
You're not under obligation to hold a cross examination.
I stated that in the beginning.
So when there's things.
You're going to have the time to speak. Brenna, did you want to continue or?
I honestly lost my train of thought, and I apologize for that, but.
Understood.
Yeah, I am certainly not surprised I was interrupted.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything further to ask?
No. No, I don't know.
So I believe we have one more person that would like to speak. Mr. Hogan, would you like to speak? Would, Brenna, are you all set for now?
Yes, thank you.
If I could just have you state your name, and then I will administer the oath.
Michael Hogan, and I live at 157 Main Street, Hatfield.
And if you could raise your right hand and swear or affirm that the testimony that you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
So somewhere in the fall of 2020, an old friend named Buster Semensky had reached out to me and said, hey, I need a favor. I worked for Buster as a young man, knew him my entire life, my father knew him. And I said, Buster, what? Quite frankly, we met at Fish Tales and had a beer, because Buster loved to go to have a beer. And he said, I'm not feeling well, and I'm going to have an absence on the Hatfield Housing Authority Board. I said, oh, no, don't go there. And he said, I need you to cover my last two years, and hopefully you'll like it so much that you'll want to do it for a while. I knew the members. I did not know Judy Shell. I certainly knew John. And so there were quite a few more beers involved, and he talked me into running, and I did. On the table at that time in June, it was a June meeting, and I went back through my notes, there was a vote for a parking lot improvement. If any of you ever took a ride through that parking lot, there were potholes that would eat up a car, the sidewalks had heaved so badly, and we have to remember, this is our elderly of Hatfield. It was only a matter of time where someone was going to get hurt. We live in such a litigious society, I knew what was going to happen. I hadn't even gone to my first meeting, and my phone rang, and it was Mr. Smith. I still have many of the texts. He wanted to meet, and this was over a two-week period, he wanted to meet at the Housing Authority on either some afternoon or Saturdays, so he could walk me around and show me what his plan was. And I remember respectfully saying, because I didn't really know Chris that well, knew of him, Chris, we're three years into this. There's a state grant on the table. We don't sign this, we're going to lose the dollars, and the parking lot needs to be done. This is ridiculous. And so, again, many more texts, many phone discussions, and I finally contacted a family attorney and said, what's my exposure here? And he said, violation of open meeting laws. If he's an active board member, he shouldn't be calling you to talk about something that he's unhappy about. So he said, you have two choices, ignore him or file a grievance or a complaint with the state. And I didn't do that. So our first meeting came, and he was incredibly agitated. And we spoke of, we allowed him the time to speak of his, his thought, and I, again, we had, prior to me, you had three years to decide this. Now, here we are in the 11th inning, 59th, 11th hour, 59th minute, and you want to change this? His, his theory was that I would be the deciding vote in his favor, and I wasn't going to do that. So it got very contentious. That was the first night that he said to Judy Shell that she was stupid, that her decision was stupid. And then he had some choice words for Brenna. And I had no exposure to Brenna, and frankly, nothing but a great experience with the Hatfield Housing Authority. So I interrupted, and for 10 minutes, I went on to Chris, and I said, why are you acting this way? Why are you so rude, particularly to the two women, Judy and Brenna? I don't understand it. You're condescending, you're rude, and there's no place for this. And I said, if you're that unhappy, what are you doing here? Leave. And he got upset, and he said, I probably will leave, and there were other people there. I said, Chris, seriously, what, this is not, this is not the forum for your agitation. This is more forum to help the elderly of Hatfield. So that did not end well. It just didn't. And from there, not more than two months later, I got a call from the Attorney General's Office stating that I had been brought up on ethics violations. I said, really? I said, on what grounds? At that point, they said, we are not able to discuss what the violations are. And I said, then I have nothing more to say to you. You're calling me to tell me that I, somebody complained that I did something unethically, and you're not going to tell me? And they said, well, that forum will come. I said, call me when you're ready. So about two weeks went by, and they called me, and they said that a gentleman, not a female, not a male, a gentleman filed a grievance with the Ethics Commission that I should have abstained a vote, because my, we have a property that abuts to the Housing Authority. What he didn't know is we had just had it surveyed, and the town bylaw says you have to have 300 feet. And I believe that property, the line, the back line is on an angle, the survey came out at 302 feet and 305 feet. So all of that, and I'll get to that, because it caused me great angst. I work for a mid-sized defense contractor in the shipbuilding business. I do have security clearances, and when this happens, because we go through training twice a month, I have to tell them when there is such a thing as an ethics violation, it's called complete transparency. So while this was going on, I was, my security clearance was revoked. Imagine my employer, you know, here, I, listen, he said, Mike, this is just over a Housing Authority? I said, well, I said, you know, it was contentious. There was one person that didn't like it. So I ended up going to Boston, having a meeting there, and I explained to them, I showed them the survey, and I said, well, yeah, but you should have abstained. And I said, no, you don't understand, I'm not abstaining from anything. I was within my right, and my first time at the, on a state board, I didn't realize that there was even an issue. So, again, a no finding. They said, you know what, in the future, just learn what you need to do. And I said, yeah, it's my first meeting, folks. And so, again, was never told it was Christopher Smith, but seemed quite ironic that I would get turned in for an ethics violation, because he was angry that I would not vote in his favor. We have elderly people that walk back and forth to their cars. I didn't want to see them fall, and the money was on the table. It was just, it was idiotic what he was asking. The, we had many, many contentious moments on the board while I was there, and I asked myself, why, why am I doing this? I absolutely enjoyed my time dealing with the rest of the board members. They were all very dedicated, very smart, made great decisions, as I did with the tenants. And when the mini split came, I was not on the board, because I had to resign. I couldn't, I couldn't put my career in jeopardy again. And I'd like to submit, this is my resignation letter, pretty much spells it out. I stood up and spoke. He had some under-breath comments, like he's had many tonight, and I get where he's at. It's not pleasant having barbs thrown at you, but you're here for a reason. It took something for this to happen. And this is what I felt, is from, from a technical and a mechanical point of view, the mini splits made sense. There are certain communities in New England that don't have a Courier and Ives Main Street. Hatfield is one of them. That is the allure of Hatfield. It is Courier and Ives. Drive down there on a frosty morning, and you'll see what I mean. And I just said, this does not make sense for us to do this, to change the view, to change the look and stick 42 or 44 mini splits with pipes running up to the second floor. And I remember he said, well, we'll plant bushes in front of it. Well, what are you going to do with the pipes? It made no sense to me. And just in concluding, it made it very difficult for the other board members. I will give John Wilks just kudos. He kept us cool. He tried to appease Chris and tried to do what was best, not just for Chris, but also the Hatfield Housing Board. And Chris, quite frankly, for you to make a statement, a broad-brust statement, that the board doesn't care about the elderly in Hatfield, I think you owe the board an apology, and you also owe the tenants of Kapawak an apology. Don't ever speak for me. I can speak for myself, and I speak quite well. There's nothing true that I didn't care about the elderly. One of the things that we did, and Chris did not want to partake in this, is the parking lot reconstruction was quite upsetting for a lot of the tenants. Many of the board members got together, we all got together. Chris didn't want any part of this, and we said, you know what, it's Christmas. Why don't we have Peter Langlois put together a meal? And we went out, and we paid, not the state, we paid for a Christmas holiday meal. You can't imagine what people thought of that. Brenna and Judy Shell delivered all of them up to each apartment. You'd think he gave somebody a million dollars. I got, I got cards to my house, phone calls, as did all of us. So for him to say that we didn't care about the tenants is just an absolute rude comment, and as John said, a slap in the face. And that's what I have to say. So you, go ahead.
We'll take that as an exhibit, thank you.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if any, do you have any questions or?
No. I have no questions.
I do not have any questions, but thank you.
Thank you very much for my time.
Very thorough. So that is the end of the people that we intend to call as witnesses. Obviously, there's no one else here, which means that, Chris, you now have the opportunity to come over, we'll administer an oath to you as well, and then you'll be able to speak. So I will ask you to raise your right hand and swear or affirm that the testimony that you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Okay. I'm going to read a statement, and then we'll go from there. I'm going to do a little questioning of some of the people that have spoken, but let's start with the statement.
They're under no obligation for a speech.
Yeah, you can ask questions.
Sure. Oh, that's fine. That's fine. Select Board and the townspeople. This evening, I wish to begin the hearing by discussing the following issues that I believe the Select Board and townspeople need to consider in the best interest of our elderly living in affordable housing. And with regards to my removal from the Hatfield Housing Authority. Topic one, state version of a housing authority. Under MGL 121B, a housing authority oversees the town's affordable housing by setting policies, controlling finances, grants, et cetera, to provide secure, safe, and healthy environment to qualifying residents. The housing authority operates independent of the town government under the State Department of E O H L C, Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities. Before that was D H C D, Department of, what was that, John? What was the name?
Housing and Community Development.
Yeah, thanks. A lot of acronyms. And the governor appoints one member to the board. The Select Board appoints a tenant representative, and three members are elected from the town. The authority hires an executive director who operates daily operations, hires staff, fills vacant, unit vacancies under strict state guidelines. A housing authority should work to provide affordable housing for 10% of the town population through grants, developments, and zoning. All housing authority members must participate in training within 90 days of appointment or election, and ethics training every two years. When D H C D, E H C D became E O H L C in 2023, this changed, and now members must renew training every two years. A housing authority, Hatfield version of a housing authority, based on my experience. After over four years as a housing authority commissioner, I've learned the following. Of the seven members I have worked with prior to October 2024, five put the interests of abutting, of abutting property owners before the best interest, safety and health of the Kapawak residents. One of these was cited and removed by state ethics for conflict of interest. One passed away, who was a good friend of mine, Buster, by the way. Our current chair, prior to being elected chair in June 2024, only showed up to meetings to vote against any proposal that would benefit or improve the lives of Kapawak residents, such as onsite parking, recycling, an emergency generator, heat pumps, and much more. Hatfield Housing Authority Minutes will show.
Hatfield Housing Authority minutes will show he came to meetings on average of four times per year, sometimes making the board wait an hour before, I'm sorry, yeah, before calling in. Because Hatfield Housing Authority now had three members, the required minimum quorum, we had no choice but to wait for him to begin meetings. This is probably explains the two hours. The other problem was virtual meeting attendance was discontinued by voted policy in May 2023. The current vice chair, also the appointed Select Board Tenant Representative, caused the local tenant organization to discontinue meeting after the first three months of her appointment. Openly violates the Hatfield Housing Authority pet policy and after spreading misinformation about heat pumps caused residents not to want them. At our last meeting, uh, in March 18th, uh, 2025, which was just a few weeks ago, uh, she agreed to accept a $20,000 state grant to upgrade Kapawak installation and air sealing, providing Mexicans weren't doing the work. She actually said this while the meeting was being recorded.
Not true.
You were there and will prove it. I would like to add that this was not my first encounter with racism at Hatfield Housing Authority meetings. It was in fact commonplace. The Hatfield Housing Authority has never cared about increasing affordable housing in Hatfield, which sits around 3% of our population, despite our executive director's announcements of available state grants to add more affordable housing to our town. And in fact, Hatfield Housing Authority refused to send a representative to the 2022 to 2024 comprehensive plan to discuss more affordable housing. I attended as a redevelopment representative. As a housing, Hatfield Housing Authority, as to Hatfield Housing Authority member required training. From 2020 to 2024, I was the only housing authority member to complete the training and hold a certificate according to the annual D H C D and the E O H L C reports. The new executive gen-
I'm sorry, we, we can't have interruptions. I'm sorry, we can't do that.
So I appreciate the invitation and thank you very much. Why, you can get it.
I know, I know, but we, we need to maintain. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. The new executive director, Carol Leipier, told me in June 2024 that all three remaining housing authorities members, me included, had to satisfy the state training requirement for the first time. Then, at the March 11th, 2025 Select Board Hearing, she stated I was the only housing authority member to have lapsed training. So I was surprised to learn from the E O H L C, February closeout report for Hatfield dated February 27th, 2025, that in fact, none of the current housing authority members, including me, had met the state training requirement.
I, I have the forms to prove I did it, just did it.
Okay. I'll give you a copy of the report, just so you have it. Okay?
I, I most certainly did it. Now it goes to Andrew.
I'm taking the, I'm taking.
What happened in 20, May, I get to talk, right? Uh, May 2024. In April, Housing Authority Executive Director Ms. Tuket resigned because she was moving to North Carolina. And Housing Authority Chair announced he was retiring from all town boards. Hatfield Housing decided to regionalize management. We met with both Amherst and Northampton Housing Authorities and chose Northampton with Carol Leipier as executive director for a trial period of six months. Commissioner Scott also announced he, his resignation for June 30th. Despite two vacancies, Hatfield Housing was able to continue to conduct business of the authority with three remaining quorum members. And we met. What happened in October 2024 and after? This was a critical meeting because Ms. Leipier wanted the housing authority to sign a three-year contract to be effective in November. The contract was incomplete with pages where the type ran off the page. And I, I, I'll provide a sample to Andrew of this. When I said I refused to vote to sign the incomplete contract, Ms. Leipier told me I was putting the future of Kapawak at risk. I made a motion to post another meeting in a week to have a corrected contract to review and vote, but I couldn't get a second. Both Commissioner Malinowski and Shell voted to accept the incomplete contract that is presented. This was a breach of fiduciary duty to the Hatfield Housing Authority. As I pointed out in other meeting business, that Chair Malinowski had been in violation of Hatfield Housing Authority meeting policy by attending the previous three meetings virtually and supplied him with a copy of the May 23 minutes in which both he and Ms. Shell had voted to discontinue virtual meetings. He became physically agitated and threatening toward me. In a few weeks later, I learned from Ms. Leipier that the Select Board was to hold an executive session with Hatfield Authority prior to our November Hatfield Housing Authority meeting. When I requested a copy of the complaint, she said she was new, and I have this in an email, and didn't know. I asked former town administrator Ms. Mashatsky, she didn't know either. I asked Select Board Member Ed Jaworski and he said he didn't know. And besides, he added, the Select Board didn't have jurisdiction over the Hatfield Housing Authority. So I didn't attend and a week or so later, Select Board Member Ms. Seiznall, prior to the Hatfield Housing November 2024 meeting, had herself appointed to the Hatfield Housing Authority by the Select Board without publicly posting the position. It is important to note that there was an applicant waiting to be appointed to the Hatfield Housing Authority since September. And it was not considered, or was the applicant, I'm sorry, was not considered, nor was that applicant considered when Ms. Seiznall had her friend appointed to the Hatfield Housing Authority in February of 2025, without the proper joint meeting of both boards. Because of the hostility and intimidation of Leipier and Seiznall toward me, coupled with disregard for state, housing authority and town law, illegal process, procedure, engaging in retaliatory measures against those who disagree with them, supported by the Hat, the Hatfield Housing Authority Chair and Vice Chair, I stopped attending meetings because now, they now had a quorum of the Hatfield Housing Members. They wanted to operate in the manner they wanted. So what was the point? Ms. Leipier and Ms. Seiznall had complete control. So it confounds me why they needed to have me removed, only two months left in my term. Then, March 28th, 2025, a Gazette article titled, "Northampton Housing Authority Boss Placed on Leave Explains Why." It also explains why they had to appear at the Hatfield Housing March 18th meeting as though the authority suddenly cared about Kapawak and its residents. It was the best Hatfield Housing Authority meeting I had ever attended. And because of my optimism, I was easily duped into believing I had finally caused some good trouble. Steps during and after this hearing, I would ask the Select Board to consider the so-called letter of complaint against me is a personal fabrication of Ms. Leipier. It was never a Hatfield Housing meeting agenda item. It was never voted or signed by the Hatfield Housing Authority. Hatfield Housing never asked Ms. Leipier to publicly read her letter at any housing authority meeting or a Select Board meeting as she did at the Select Board meeting of February 25th, 2025. And by doing so, violated my right to an executive session under Mass General Law 30A, Section 21. Further, there is no supporting documents for this so-called four charges leveled against me, except my lapse of training. And as I've said before, to remove me for that, you would need to remove the other three members. For this hearing, after this hearing, even if the Select Board decides not to remove me, the Hatfield Housing Authority has many challenges ahead. With the Hatfield Housing Authority Executive Director being suspended and investigated, I'm not sure what can be done with only one more meeting in my term. Perhaps you would agree that rather than focusing on removing me, you would instead use this opportunity to discuss the future of Hatfield Housing Authority and how to best serve Hatfield and Kapawak residents. I would propose for consideration that the Hatfield Housing Authority reach out to the Amherst Housing Authority to see if they're still open to working with us on a six-month trial. And if so, ask Northampton Housing Authority to release Hatfield Housing Authority from, uh, no, the November three-year contract, which was incomplete, with Northampton Housing Authority and by default, Hatfield Housing Authority under Holyoke receivership. This proposal may be very welcome, considering the uncertain future of, for all Northampton-related authorities. Respectfully submitted, Christopher Smith. I'll give you a copy.
Did you have any questions for Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I mean, there was, I just had one question. Well, I had a couple of questions. One was, you stated that there was somebody removed by the State Ethics Committee, but my understanding that nobody was removed. There was a hearing, but there was no findings. Is, is that correct? I mean, the State Ethics Commission didn't say, you have to quit.
He left when he submitted a letter. He said he had an issue with, he wasn't a butler, for God's sake.
There was no finding.
Question.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you can do that. Sure.
I mean, he wasn't removed by the Ethics Commission.
Like this all the time, don't we? Sure.
Yes, I just want to make sure we have the correct facts.
Okay.
And some of the stuff you mentioned at the end pertained to other stuff than what people made accusations about or talked about. I mean, I think what was being talked about was how you got along with the board and the previous boards. And actually, I'm sort of surprised that all this stuff has happened over the years.
Yeah, and why would I stay if that was the case? You know, I'm going to say that John and I, I, up till tonight, I thought we got along pretty good. We didn't always agree. And yes, I think he was very wrong to use the Hatfield Housing Authority when he reached out to the butters. But like he said, he used his own postage. But you still don't use the Hatfield Housing Authority letterhead when you do it.
But I got to ask you a question. Of everything that was, everything that was said tonight, do you feel that you made any mistakes in your time on the board? Did you make any mistakes about any of the stuff that was mentioned tonight by?
Saying perfect head? No. And you, how long have you known each other? Forty years? I mean, for God's sake, but look, I have served for 44 years on dozens of boards and committees, both elected and appointed. This one, I don't know.
This isn't the first, there's been a pattern, Christopher.
Diana, you've got a problem and I told you before, you should recuse yourself.
I'm not recusing myself, there's no problem.
Yeah, okay. We'll, we'll, we'll see you later. Um, but here's the point. I went in there, I didn't run for the office. And yes, maybe, you know, I got written in. But you know, the thing of it was, I just wanted, you know, I had been going to the lunch at the COA, I'm an elder, right? And I listened to what those people were saying and they live in fear. They live in fear. Brenna scared them to death. They were afraid they were going to get kicked out.
Who did you say scared them to death?
The tenants that I talked to.
No, who scared them? Did you say Brenna scared them?
Brenna, in part, and the board. And the board.
That is a ridiculous statement.
This is Mr. Smith's time to speak.
I'm just telling you what they told me, okay? So when I got written in, I was very surprised. Lydia came, when I went to, you know, get sworn in, she, she called me and said, do you want to do this? And I said, what do you mean? She says, well, you know what it's like over there. And I said, yeah, okay. And she said, well, you know, you could back out if you want. And I said, all right, I'll give it a good try. I'll tell you something. After I heard that, I called Buster, because I've known Buster for years. And I said, what do you think? I said, can I do any, can I do anything that might make things better here? And Buster said to me, look, if people, you, want you to come, why don't you give it a try? I did. In the first meeting, oh, by the way, we met virtually, actually, first few years because of COVID, right? It was interesting because when I got on the board, Buster nominated me for chair. And I'm going, Buster, I don't know anything. I'm not trained. What are you talking about? And he said, well, he says, I've known you for years and, you know, I thought you'd make a good chair. I said, no, I have to do this for a year or two. I have to get trained, which I did. So after that.
It's lying like that.
So, um. Ed, have you ever known me to lie? Ever?
I've known you for a long time. You're a pretty smart guy, but I mean, I'm hearing all this stuff and I'm sort of like, wow.
I'm going wow too, because I can't believe the stuff that they were saying. And yes, there's personalities, right? And I get it. Diana wasn't too happy that I worked for Lindsay. I get it.
I'm going to address that.
We don't want to have to go through that, right?
I'm going to address that. It has nothing to do with that. In the, in the top, first of all, that was seven years ago. In the time since then, I've actually appointed you to committees. We've come before this board a number of times for a variety of things with no incident. There's other people that I work with now who also supported Lindsay. That, that's a ridiculous statement. It's just deflecting, it is just deflecting from your own behavior. And trying to make it my problem, it's not.
So I don't get a chance to speak?
Fine. You've been speaking for a long time, but go ahead.
Okay. So let me ask you a question. Mr. Malinowski set up two meetings to appoint, what's her name, Betty Snow? Or somebody who, when there was a vacancy, you know, I don't know her very well or anything, but she put her application in. You, there was a joint meeting set up twice in the fall. On the second one.
Just because the meeting was set up doesn't mean we were going to vote her in and we made a decision as a board to.
Jesus Christ. Why can't you let me finish? Let me finish. On the second time, I'm sitting there waiting for an hour. You asked me to wait for an hour, see if the other board members would show up. They didn't. And you said to me at that time, I think it was early October or something, what's going on with your board? going on with your board? And I said, I don't know. They posted this meeting, they're not showing up. Whether, I don't know, whether you appointed Betty Snow or Bozo the Clown, I don't, you know, whatever it was, she, she put in her application, she was due the respect of a consideration. And that, what didn't happen. And when I said that to you in this room, and I, and I said that, I walked away, and what did you say? Do you remember? I have 100% faith in Mr. Malinowski.
I do.
Oh, good.
I do, let me be clear.
Stick with that. Okay, so, you know, at that point, I don't know what happened. I was thinking we would do it again. And then the next thing I know, there's, Kara's given me some, an email, there's an executive session with the Board of Selectmen about what? And then I, you know, I said, is there a complaint? She says, I know, I don't know what, what they're talking about. I asked Marlene, there's no complaint, okay? So what happened there? I don't know, somebody explain it to me. Ed, you know, I saw you at the VA. You said, I don't know what's going on. What the hell? And the next thing I know, you're, you're getting yourself appointed to the Housing Authority.
Yes.
Okay.
Because it was not functioning, and it is functioning now, very nicely.
Yeah, the last meeting was great, which you, maybe should have run earlier. I don't know. But I'll tell you something. You know, if that's my last meeting, I'm going to say this to you. If that had been my first meeting, things would have run a whole lot different. I got to say that I really got a whole different, I hate to use the word vibe, but it was, it was 100% different. But John Wilks, I'm going to give him all the credit in the world. You know, he was one of the other people that was cared, I got to say, and was fair and a good chair. And we got the emergency generator in. They even voted. It was insane. You know, they weren't recycling over there. They were just, they had just had a dumpster.
Do you want to stay to the content of the?
Just saying what it was like. And for them, you know, the pushback was, if it costs a nickel more, we won't do recycling. And I'm going, what are you talking about? Everybody in town does recycle. It was kind of weird that way. So anyway.
Well, even in here, there's, there's emails back and forth about you actually reaching out on your, on behalf of the Housing Authority without authorization on that contacting those recycling people.
You want to talk about it? You want to talk about it?
Brenna.
All right. There's a guy named Ty Albertson.
I know him very well, he's a neighbor.
Right. And it just occurred to me, I said, wouldn't this be a wonderful community thing to help an autistic person if they didn't want to, if, if the board didn't want to have a separate container for recycling, maybe this young man? And I said to the board, and the board said, fine, meet with, you know, with Brenna about it. Well, his mother, Ty, you know, autistic kids have trouble, and she was late. She was about 20, 30 minutes late to the appointment. And I asked, I said, Brenna, I'm sorry, she's late, but understand the situation. And she just basically said, you had your chance, and that was it. It was, it was, it was sad, it really was. But I, I can tell you, that would have been a warm, wonderful thing to have.
I met with you guys, and his own mother said, this isn't going to work out, because with the state, you need certain liability insurance. They weren't late to the meeting, you were late to the meeting. And I did sit down with them.
This is your time, so if you'd like to not allow this, you're allowed.
Brenna?
That is what we.
Can I ask Brenna a question? She's still here? Did you ever have a personal rate, relationship with a contractor who got awards to do work?
You're not, you're not under any obligation to answer any of these questions, but you may.
Stay in Pitchco and verify it.
This is, this is exactly the kind of behavior that, no, Christopher, this is exactly the kind of behavior we're talking about. Exactly the kind of behavior.
Keep it, keep it going the way it was? Yeah, fine. Or we could clean it up.
It, oh, it's cleaned up.
People want to, if people want to write me in again, I'll work to clean it up. And I think I'm done, you know, to be honest with you. I have one more meeting to go. This executive director, have you read the corruption? Oh, my God.
Christopher.
It's off. Anyway, good night.
Okay, so at this point, it appears that the, the, pardon? The testimony part of this is over, and so we, we actually have to close the hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
So we closed the public hearing, and now we would enter into deliberations? Public deliberations, correct?
Yes, and it's closed to the Select Board.
Just the speaking, but people can be here?
Everyone should be here.
Okay. I guess I just, before we begin deliberations, I want to state clearly that the opportunity to be a public servant is an honor and a privilege. And with that privilege comes great responsibility to execute our duties in the best interest of Hatfield. But getting ready for this, this also feels like a really good time right now to acknowledge the professionalism and dedication of my colleagues, and I extend that acknowledgement to our Town Administrator Andrew as well. You know, by fostering a mutually respectful relationship here at the board, I think that we set the standard for expected behavior that we, we should expect from all boards, committees, and authorities. And ultimately, we do create a productive and efficient atmosphere to serve Hatfield. So the other thing I would like to state before we enter into any deliberations is I would like to recognize Chairman Malinowski, because he has remained committed and dedicated despite very difficult circumstances that I think are clear to see tonight, the type of behavior that's, that's been going on. And I also want to recognize Judy Shell, also who remained dedicated and committed despite the circumstances, and has really been an asset over there, sort of as the boots on the ground, and somebody who's very familiar with the property and the residents over there. So those were things that I felt, just I personally wanted to say before we entered into any deliberations. So, you know, I really came into this not really knowing if I thought the best action was to just let Mr. Smith continue his term or actually remove him from the board. I, I think that the behavior here, I was, I was really hoping that maybe the behavior would be, would be a little better. I think that there's a lot of unprofessional behavior that is corroborated by not one person, not one instance, but a lot of different instances. And I don't think that that, that that behavior lives up to the standards that I think Hatfield residents have a right to, to expect from a public official. And that, I'm, that's, I'll let everyone else weigh in at this point.
Now, we did get a legal opinion, correct? Or did he weigh in on, he weighed on this? What, what did legal say as far as after he reviewed the information that was presented to him?
So I would say there is no written legal opinion. And I, I would say that everything we have done has been in accordance with the procedures and processes a town council has laid out. You're following Chapter 121B of the Mass General Laws, which states that it's within the Select Board's right to remove a member for conduct or for not fulfilling their duties, provided they're given an opportunity to attend a hearing 14 days. All of that has been in accordance with, with the statute. I think what you may be referring to is, it is not always typical for a Select Board to, to take the, the measure to remove an elected official. It's often thought of as being a high barrier to do so, to have a high bar set for misconduct. That's less of a legal question and more of a political one, I would say. And then there's also the risk that comes from taking a step like that, should the, the party removed, feel that it was done not according to the statute, they may decide to protest in some way, often by taking legal action. So you can understand why a person who's protecting the best interests of the town might say, with a month left in the term, you may not, you might want to consider not taking that step. However, I think at the same time, this board has a duty to fulfill its obligations, which would include Chapter 121B, which you mentioned, the statute. And if you feel that the, the barrier for, the bar for removal has been met, I think you still have the ability to do so. So that's, that's a roundabout way of saying that we're following what the town council has, has asked for in, in doing this, this hearing and everything else. That you can consider the, the pros and cons of, of what might response be for, for removing a member, but I think it's also been done according to the statute. I will say that we are.
That answers my question. So on one hand, on one hand, what we're sort of saying is, he's only got one more month, because then he's outdone, he's not running again.
Correct.
You do have a couple of people that are running.
He just indicated he would serve again.
He is not pulled papers, and we have candidates who have pulled papers. He could mobilize a writing campaign.
Mm-hmm.
That's within his right.
Correct.
But even if he was removed today, he could still do a writing campaign.
Without question. We don't have a impeachment option to, to bar from seeking office in the future, which is interesting.
I believe that we have, well, personally, I believe I have an obligation as, as a member of the Select Board to back all committees and that are volunteering their time, including us. None of us have to do these jobs. The Housing Authority doesn't have to do those jobs. And to force somebody to not want to do that job on a few different cases that I see here is, is not acceptable. And I don't think that if, well, I, I believe that if we don't support the people that the Housing Authority in particular this time, with taking this to our attention, then I don't think I'm sending a member to the, a message to the other committees that I would not back them if they were having troubles, which may prevent people from volunteering to more help out the town.
Oh, I agree. I wish some of this was brought to us a lot sooner. It's like, some of the stuff's been going on for a while, but we were never informed or told once that board became not functional anymore, until later. I mean, and that sort of, that caused more problems once they, they were down to three people. I mean, if they had five, then they'd have a vote to conduct business. But once they were down to three, and you had some differences of opinion among a couple of the members, it became sort of personal, I guess. I mean, you had people pushing their agenda, which they thought was totally the right agenda, but people were against them.
You mean like previously with the mini splits and the park?
Right, right, all that stuff, I think, just developed into something it shouldn't have been.
This has been a pattern for a long time.
Right.
I believe.
On other boards as well.
I think that for the Hatfield Housing Authority to have sent this letter and gotten together and built up to bringing it before us shows that they've been under a lot of stress, and they're coming to us and asking for our support out of frustration and disappointment, maybe, and they didn't know what else to do. And we were like, we're like the last resort, so I want to, I, I want to support the Housing Authority and, and show that I'm backing them, definitely.
I think that's what I mean when I talk about setting that standard, right? And, and what we will not tolerate as, you know.
And I was sort of disappointed that Mr. Smith didn't, I mean, there was a lot of accusations made against him, and when he had a chance to oppose or deny these accusations, he didn't present anything forward to tell, tell why he had a difference of opinion. He wanted to talk about some other stuff, basically, that's what I heard. I don't know if I, if you guys heard this.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that was the same, his same response at the last meeting that we had. It's just a, you know, it's just classic deflection. Instead of facing, you know, the, the things that we're, we're discussing regarding his very specific behaviors and his very specific, you know, failures in terms of showing up at meetings, it's just to deflect and insult other people and accuse other people of, of all these other things that there's no evidence of. So it's, you know, there's just been such a complete breakdown, and this is a tough situation to be in, because we, we have a whole different set of standards here that we operate under. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to mention that, because it's, you, you can see the difference, and you can see how it affects the ability of a board to be effective and productive. And at the end of the day, that's what we're supposed to be here for. You know, to, to accuse people of not caring about residents, and that is just, it's, it's, it's disturbing. This, this kind of behavior is just very disturbing, and it's really unfortunate that this was going on so long before people knew about it. And really, what happened, just to clarify, I was actually having lunch downstairs when he pulled me aside and said, we have problems on, on the board. And I said, okay, well, maybe it's time the Select Board steps in and, and takes a look at this, maybe there's something we can do, maybe we can all three get on, because there were three vacancies, I wasn't sure if that was possible, probably not. But I said, maybe one of us can get on, you know, well, and, and then that's what triggered me to make some calls and start having some conversations. And that's where I started learning about all of this, you know, and, and just really how, how deep and profound it was. I'm, I, I just, I, I reject this kind of behavior by, by a public official. I just don't think it's appropriate. And it's really unfortunate that I think we lost some good board members because of this. I mean, when you start just, you know, filing ethics complaints about people because you have a disagreement with them, you know, that's, that's not, that is not.
Especially when it's their first meeting.
Good behavior, that is really just not, I mean, it'd be one thing if these, if there were findings, if there were ethics violations, but in both cases, there were no findings. And, and, you know, I think we all know, we, you know, we know these people, right? We know Jay, we know Mike, we, we know Alex. These are, these are people who, who've served in other capacities, you know, Jay has done a lot for the town, never had problems like this before. That speaks highly to me. That, that lets me know where the problem is.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, I've known Jay for years, and I, I have nothing but respect for Jay, and it sounds like he, he tried to handle this in a very professional manner, and it was dealing with some inappropriate behavior, but he, he seemed to handle it in a very professional manner. Even the person that was having bad behavior said he handled it in a, in a professional manner. So, I mean, I, I, I know all three of them. I know Mr. Hogan, Mr. Smith, and over the years, and I, I just find the behavior of Mr. Smith, of everybody coming forward and stating it was bad behavior and what he did, I mean, I've served on committees, too. I mean, we may not get along, but you try to have a little respect for one another, and we're going to have difference of opinions. And it's even harder on this side when you have people you know over the years, and you might have to make a decision that you know they're not going to feel good about, and you're not going to feel good about, but you know it's got to be the right decision for the protection of the town. for the protection of the town and for the betterment of other committees. Because I wish that this was brought up a few years ago with this kind of behavior and...
You know, same, all I can say is I, I brought it up the minute I really learned about it in this specific, you know, what was specifically going on. I also want to add, you know, we're referring to Jay and Mike and, but Brenna, you know, came before the board a number of times on a number of things. Brenna was always very professional. I had seen her over at Kapawanka a number of times, extremely professional, extremely kind. You know, to have allegations hurled at her that people were terrified of her is, it's, you know, it's, it's just not fair to do that to somebody. I mean, we, you know, you work with Brenna, I'm not sure she came before you, but she's...
Unless that's being said to substantiate your behavior at all.
Well, that's what I mean. It's just that deflection and it's that, so, I mean, you know, this isn't anything any of us enjoy or want to do. This isn't, this is, but I, I guess I feel, you can't, you just can't let that kind of behavior go on and have it appear to be condoned.
I mean, all the people that testified, they all can't be wrong. I mean, on one hand, it just...
And I mean, there's, there is the failure to appear, there's the lack of, you know, not doing the, not meeting the qualifications. I don't know where you got that form. I can give you a certificate that I performed all the training, and it's very lengthy, very detailed, a lot of tests and quizzes. And let me tell you, I did it. So I don't know why it doesn't appear on there, but...
Well, I don't know most people that are involved with this. So, and listening to everyone, I believe everyone, and have no reason to not believe anyone. However, what the people have said coming in here about what's going on alone, or this letter from the Housing Authority and the Board of Commissioners, either one of those two things would be enough for me to want removal, is removal from the board. Either one of those things. And again, I don't really have any personal connection with most people involved in that. So...
Well, I mean, this is tough because you have an elected official that has done some good for the town, but has obviously caused some problems in town. And, but I think the evidence sort of is, I mean, it's easy to say, "Well, he's got one more month to go, just let it slide." And, but I suppose, as much as I hate to say this, that the evidence is strongly against them, and he's not admitting any wrongdoing whatsoever. He feels his actions were all correct and appropriate. And that's not, that's not a good way to, that's not, if you're not going to accept any responsibility for your actions, that makes it even a good reason to say...
That's an excellent point. I think through this whole process, he has not accepted any responsibility for his actions.
But nor, he has not denied that he has done any of this stuff either.
Exactly. Another fair point.
So as much as I regret saying this, I guess I'm in agreement that we should move for removal, but I don't know if this is now going to turn into litigation. See, looking at it from the town, he could, if we vote for removal for the betterment of the town, could it end up in litigation costing the town?
You know, whichever way you go, you could argue that there could be risks in that. You could claim if there was issues with even having this hearing tonight. I can't tell you one way or another. I think the action of removing could potentially open us up to more litigation, but at the same time, towns and cities face litigation all the time for doing things that they're supposed to do or allowed to do or anything else. So I, I don't want that to be the only thing on your minds.
Yeah, I mean, it shouldn't be the determining factor. We've been in touch with town council.
Yes.
We've gotten clear instructions from town council. You know, it's difficult to predict how somebody might react to something like that, but I don't think that that should scare us into not acting and...
But even if there's removal, it doesn't prevent him forever running for another office, right? So he can...
Or the same office.
Or the same office. He could still, in the future, we're just removing him if we remove him, and it would only be until this term, which is another month, right?
Yes. So, I mean, that's, that's a fair point too, right? I mean, the timing of this makes it, you know, worthwhile discussion to have, that does it make sense to do that? I, you know, the, I hope the message is clear that this type of behavior is not appropriate and won't be tolerated.
I think that's, that's the big point that we need to make, and I think we've sort of proven that tonight, that we're going to call people on the carpet and if they have inappropriate behavior, and question it.
And I think, you know, I think even his behavior tonight, I think for townspeople watching who may be, you know, there's a lot of people saying a lot of things, I think it's pretty clear that the people who spoke tonight about behavior at previous meetings, I feel like they're, everything they said was justified, really, by, by his behavior here tonight. I guess I was hoping for better. I, you know, I did, like I said, I came into this completely not knowing if I would go with the removal. I think the fact that it's a month makes it a little bit difficult of a decision because there, you know, we ultimately have the obligation to protect the town, right? We serve the town, we serve the residents of the town. And at this point, what is the best way to serve the town and protect the town? With a month to go, that makes it an interesting question. I think even if it was six months to go, my answer would be very clear. But with one month to go, I, but I'm, I'm upset about this. I'm not going to lie. I'm upset about what I've learned, you know, what's, what's in these documents, his behavior that I've learned about his behavior at the last couple of hearings, that that's, it's not appropriate, and I don't accept that kind of behavior. I don't like it. So, you know, if, are we, could he, I mean, anyone can sue for anything. It doesn't mean that it's got, so he could try to take us to court, to court just based on what we've done, whether we take action or not, right?
That's correct.
So we, we're not maybe opening ourselves up to anything more or less by actually taking the action.
The argument is, if you take the action, then every step involved would be scrutinized as did we follow it directly according to the statute. We consulted town council repeatedly, and I believe we followed the correct proceedings. I think this hearing tonight was fair, but the burden will be higher should removal take place. There'll be a larger question asked, where all the steps followed. I believe we have good records showing they were, but that's up to the board to decide how they want to proceed.
It's, you know...
There's also a question of if you have any doubt, you know, based on anything that was raised tonight, if you have any concerns about any of the exhibits, anything else, you think it deserves more investigation. If you feel like you still don't, don't know, there is an op, there is a option in the statute for suspension while further investigation takes place. That also remains available. Typically, that would be done, say, before a hearing takes place, but if you leave the hearing and feel that it's inconclusive, that's an option available to you. However, if you feel like you have conclusive evidence to move one way or another, it would make more sense to make a decision on removal, yes or no.
But if you have a suspension, would you have to have another hearing?
That would not be obligated, especially if the person leaves their position.
So if you had a suspension, and then all of a sudden his time ran out, and we couldn't reach a conclusion, then it just, what happens? Disappears?
I think then the matter would most likely be moved, but we could talk to town council about that.
So you could, I mean, so our, our options tonight are vote for removal, vote for suspension pending further investigation, or vote for a letter, like a reprimand letter or something like that? That's another option, right?
Yeah, I would say that letter of reprimand isn't necessarily spelled out in the statute, but I don't think you're, I don't think you would be unable to do that. It would be basically a way to close this. You could say, "We've opted not to remove you, yet these are our concerns." So I think you could still do something like that if you chose to.
But if we vote for suspension or removals, then he's not allowed to do anything at his next meeting, which would be his last meeting if he attends that meeting.
That's correct. And not able to act in any way as a Housing Authority member, should he be removed or suspended.
I don't like the suspension idea. I mean, I think if we really, if there was really more information that we needed to investigate, I don't have anything else I feel we need to investigate. I think the exhibits we have, the testimony we've had has been pretty clear. You know, and, and the other thing to take into consideration is part of the, part of what was of concern particularly to Brenna was that he was acting as a member of the Housing Authority without, you know, the authority to do that from the board, which he would be free to do for another month if we left him on the board. You know, so that's a behavior that needs to be taken into consideration, I guess, when we, when we're thinking about if we just want to leave someone on a board who is clearly very agitated and has had a history of acting on behalf of that board without the true authority to do so.
What I, what I do appreciate about this board and the previous boards I've worked on is we try to talk everything out and, and look at all the angles if we can to see what's in the best interest of the town and what's the right thing to do. So I think we've, I think we've gotten to narrow it down to what we have to do, so...
And that's why I wanted to make that statement about, you know, this is, this is a pleasure to be on a board with, with people like this and with people like you, excuse me, both of you, and I do appreciate that. And I've had the, you know, the good fortune of working with excellent colleagues. And I would add Mr. Moriarty, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Gahn to that list, previous boards I've worked with. But I, so I think I hear what you're saying, Ed.
So I guess we can move forward. I think we've got it, I think I've done my discussion, but I don't know if Greg's got...
I think I have. I, I'll stick with it. I think, I think my decision is best for the town of Hatfield.
Right. And if, even if, I mean, if we move forward with removal, it doesn't prevent him from running again or being in office on anything else.
Correct.
And it's only for a month anyways. And his behavior dictates that decision. So, okay, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay.
Make a motion and...
Is there, is there formal wording of the motion?
It would just, I think, just be a motion to remove from the Housing Authority. You can say, under the provisions of Chapter 121B, Section 6.
So how does that have to be phrased in a motion?
I move that concurrent with Chapter 121B, Section 6, Massachusetts General Laws, that we remove Christopher Smith from the Hatfield Housing Authority.
Hey, Greg, you got that? Did you write it down?
Yeah. Okay. I'll make a motion that under Chapter 121B, Section 6, we remove Chris Smith from the Housing Board of Commissioners.
Second. A motion made in seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, again.
And this is one of those things where the bad stuff you have to do sometimes, but it's the right stuff. I mean, you just, the evidence presented just gave us no choice.
Okay, well, again, thank you to both of you through this process and to Andrew. Andrew, you've been really great through this. It is, Ed, no one's enjoyed it. Absolutely not enjoyed it. Okay, so we do have two other quick topics. The approval of the DPW job description.
Yeah, we got some other business, huh?
We do have some other business. We do have some other business, and I think my paperwork is... The job description, the DPW Director job description. So I, so I had spent some time reviewing this a little bit more closely and had given some suggestions to Andrew about adding language specifically about managing procurement, but with specific reference to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30B. So that was very clear, that that would be an expectation, that this person had knowledge and understanding of Chapter 30B. And then there was also this other lang, it's, it's underlined in here. "Researches, evaluates, recommends, applies for administers, and manages grant-funded programs and manages all relevant reporting." Was something that I felt strongly about having that. And then the other thing that suggested changes were to make the degree in engineering preferred, that a CDL is desirable and that the wastewater and, waste and wastewater treatment operator licenses are desirable.
Those are probably water and wastewater treatment?
Yeah, water. It should be water.
We'll fix that.
Yeah.
That's not me.
Because I think that we want to maximize the amount of people that would be able to apply so that we have, you know, the best pool of candidates. Those are pretty specialized licenses, and I think that if someone has a wastewater treatment operator license, they're a wastewater treatment operator. Yep. So those were my, my thoughts and recommendations, and, you know, Andrew has changed this accordingly. So I just thought those two things were important to have noted in this before we advertise.
Did the departments get to look at this? Or the supervisors?
No, I have not submitted that to them yet, but I can't.
Make sure they, they're all okay with this is...
I like the changes. I like the preferred part for some of those, so, and the Mass. General Laws. I mean, Andrew's our chief procurement officer, but, but he needs to have some understanding if whoever gets hired, if we hire somebody to do procurement or...
Yeah, because below a certain threshold, there's, there's still rules to do, how to do it. It's just, it wouldn't rise to the level of maybe the chief.
You've got to know under somebody that you can do this and do that. You have to know the procedure.
Right.
Actually, I'll go a step further. Our departments are so small, I would welcome input from anybody on the three departments. If any of them would, would like to look at it and have any say.
Was the, was the hope to get this approved tonight, though, so that we can, it's available? Did we advertise?
We have not advertised it, no.
Right, because we need to have this ready, right?
Well, that was the desire, but, you know, if it's important enough to the board to have this reviewed by a wider audience, of course, we absolutely can. The one caution I would give is that it's possible that some of those folks may be candidates for this position, which isn't a reason not to have it approved, but, or review it, but that it's...
You know, honestly, you know, if, if... You know, honestly, you know, if we're going to run it by people's eyes, it might not even be a bad idea to run it by even like our police and fire chief, who would probably interact with the DPW Director, you know, in a number of ways, and, you know, it would be nice to see if they, if we're going to do that, then let's, you know...
And then we can have it approved at the meeting on the eighth.
Yeah, we have a meeting next week.
Yeah, it's only a week away. I'll circulate to, give you a list.
If you circulate, maybe ask for feedback by close of business Friday or something like that.
Who would you like feedback from?
So the next question would be, are we going to do interviews, or are we going to have a committee do an interview?
Oh, that's a good discussion, but can we finish up the, he was wondering who should take a look at?
The position.
I mean, you're saying everybody, like, all the employees?
Yeah. That are going to work under this person.
Oh, yeah, that's not a bad idea. I mean, I would add the police chief, and I would add the fire chief, just because, you know, those departments should be working together. They clearly do. And I think that both of those individuals, the police and fire chief, you know, might have really good input on that.
And department heads.
Yeah. All department heads?
All, the DPW department head, the wastewater department head.
Well, Greg is suggesting even all the employees at the DPW. I mean, give them a chance, right? But, do you think anyone, do you agree with the police and fire taking a look at it?
Well, he has to interact with all those departments, so, it's not a bad thing.
Right. Anybody else?
I'm not sure if we need all of the DPW, but if you want to, it doesn't hurt.
And they may not, they may choose to not weigh in, but...
They might not want to. If you work closely, you think you can say that.
The treasurer does, yep.
It doesn't matter to me.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if you have a blast to, there's no one that I don't want to weigh in on it, I guess, as, long story short.
Right.
I mean, if Jerry had a thought on it, then maybe there's a reason, I don't know, you know?
I'll send to department heads and DPW staff, and have folks give me their thoughts by the end of day, Friday.
Yeah, that would be good. I mean, but like I say, I'm specifically interested in knowing that police and fire are...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great. And then we'll put it on the agenda for Tuesday, and we'll have feedback at that point, and we'll go from there.
Excellent. And then the MVP grant and letter of support.
Yes. So I have a letter of support, I have this one that can be signed, should you go in that direction, and then I have copies of it for each of you. This is the letter of support, and I also have an email exchange with Ken Comia at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. This came to us on Monday, so that's why this is late, and the deadline for the grant is, you guessed it, Friday. So this is working somewhat quickly, but it's an interesting idea that PVPC has come up with, and they are choosing two communities in their area to be, to be pilot communities to work with them on this project that will be funded through the Municipal Vulnerability Planning Grant Program. It would be a partnership with PVPC and the UMass Donahue Institute to look at what the implications are of climate change and potential sea level rise, et cetera, on, they say migration, they talk about climate refugees. They're not talking about people from Syria, they're talking about people from the Cape, essentially, people moving from Boston or other areas where climate makes it so that they could be losing their homes, which, actually, I'm coming from Newburyport, where that's happened in a couple cases already. So, they're interested in giving us some extra resources from PVPC to do some housing modeling and demand analysis, and looking at some potential for us to think about how communities like us might see change from other places across the state not being habitable anymore, which I think is really fascinating. It's going to help us with some of the research that we'd want to do, implementing our comprehensive plan and making our housing production plan a reality. So I think there's not really a downside in doing this. I think we'd get some extra resources, it would all be managed by PVPC and UMass Donahue Institute, and would really add up nicely with a lot of our other efforts that we're doing right now in housing.
Might give us a lot of information about housing...
Without any obligation to...
Right, exactly. Right.
And would give us, you know, a couple of ideas.
This would just put us in the pool of communities that may be selected, right? Or is this actually...
They're interested in us as one of the...
They're interested, well, that kind of makes sense. They should be interested in us.
That's right. I think all the stars are aligned. The town has a plan that's fantastic. I think we're a community that's in some ways very representative, but also has our, you know, unique elements that I think are worth looking at. And then there's a lot of folks here who want to work on something like this, so I'd be excited for it.
Okay. So we don't have to pay for it, we don't have to do the work, we'll just end up with some, hopefully, useful information about housing potential?
Yes.
There's no downside?
I don't think so. Yeah.
Make a motion to accept this as presented?
A second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do, all three need to sign this. Oh, you know what? I thought we were going to have warrants to sign. Handley was going to give us warrants.
These two already signed it.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
I think you're good.
Okay.
I can, I can't get a signature.
Is that it? That's okay.
We do have two signatures, so...
Yeah, that's fine. Anything else?
You want more?
No. Not really.
A motion to adjourn?
Watch out, or I'll be making...
Greg made a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, oh, second, yes.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Time for my slipper.